Welcome back everyone.
Ah, Thomas. Agent Morgan, it's past twenty-one hundred. Let's meet up again at the Community Center tomorrow. I haven't been sleeping much since this all started, to be honest. I'm exhausted.
I was just about to suggest the same thing.
I'll make arrangements for people to gather between fifteen hundred and seventeen hundred. I'll try and get as many people as I can to come, so don't be late, okay? Don't be late.
I'll be there.
The Community Center's on the south side. I've marked it on your map.
Thanks, Thomas. Well then, see you tomorrow.
How's it going guys? It's me, Conker, and I am back for some... Deli premonitions. Last time we had escaped a lumberyard, and now we are going... To try and get some sleep, I guess? So let's try and do that. Oh my god. Hey... Oh my gosh, what is going on with this car? Uh... Holy cow. Alright, so... Oh... Okay. I have no idea what's going on. Hmm... Well, I can apparently sleep in here, so... That's what I wanna do. I wanna barge in there and just get some sweeps. Holy cow. Aw, secrets! Oh hell yeah. Killed a man once. Get it! You squeeple.
Zack, is there something here that you wanna check out?
We need to be at the Community Center by fifteen hundred today. Just think of talking in front of all those people. What do you think, Zack? It's going to get fun.
I think I need to get some sweep. Hmm... It's twenty-one hundred. Let's try six hours. Yee! Okay. Okay, it's six. So if I get another six, it's gonna be twelve. So I wanna get nine, don't I? Yee! Good. Alright, so now... I wanna try and get back over there as soon as possible.
Zack, if you notice anything, just stop me.
Oh boy! Yay! What's gonna happen now? And on a rainy night.
Greenville Community Center. Now that's an impressive building. Clock tower's impressive too.
Hey... It's kinda funny how the doorknobs look like soda cans. Golden soda cans.
Zack, I haven't been on stage like this since elementary school. I'm not some tree in the wind this time either. That was a tough role. I was a piece of scenery.
Oh, I get it.
Bright red tree.
Thank you, all for coming today. Getting right down to business. Agent Morgan, from the Federal Bureau of Investigations, wishes to speak with you.
Good afternoon.
Jeez, splash.
I'm Special Agent Francis York Morgan. Some of you are already aware by now of the tragic murder of Anna Graham. Truly a heinous, terrible crime. I've come to this town to solve the murder of this young, beautiful girl. And to bring the one responsible to justice. Unfortunately, incidents like these have a tendency to happen again.
Hmm.
I asked to have you gathered here so I can share some advice in order to minimize the risk of further fatal incidents. Firstly, please, stay away from any dark, dangerous, isolated places.
Yeah, that'd make a lot of sense.
Those of you with children, especially of Anna's age, please, guide your children away from such places at all costs.
Like, oh my gosh.
Secondly, avoid going out when it is raining. Now I've heard the folklore story... Of the raincoat killer. There is a chance that the murderer is mimicking the story. Women should also be especially careful. I would hate to see more victims...
Hmm. Carol McLean, bar owner and singer. It just like completely freezes like that. My brain forgets the things.
Who's the fashionably late one?
That's Carol, Thomas's sister. She owns a bar.
Thomas's sister.
Excuse me. So, as I have said, avoid going outside when it is raining. Young women should be especially careful. Report anything or anyone suspicious immediately. The murderer will be caught and brought to justice. But you must all remain on guard until we do so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yes. Oh, yeah. There's this guy. That is weird. Assistant. Did he just like get there now, or what? I don't understand.
When paying for our sins, we must not frown. The loss of Anna was for that debt.
Oh, okay. For a minute, I thought he had like stitches or something like that all through the talus, and then I realized that was part of the mask strap.
When purple fog covers our town, we'll all wander in hell, I fret. So says Mr. Stewart.
Why this whole "so says Mr. Stewart"? I think anyone can understand that you're obviously repeating what he's saying.
Sure knows how to steal thunder.
Well then Zack, let's ask some questions before all these guys leave.
Yay! Why, wait, what? Why am I hurt? I don't, what? Why am I hurting? What's going on? Why am I hurting? Why, why, why am I hurting?
Quite a performance. Mysterious and very poetic.
What?
But I don't think many of your audience appreciated it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Like, he just nods his head and he's just like, yeah, I know what you wanna say.
The purple fog appears with rain. Soiling and ruining our town. The evil does not drain. Find out why the town is soiled. Remove the source from which it buoyed. Then and only then, your case is solved. But for this to happen, to solve the crime, the proper must do the proper at the proper time. It is not yet mine, that is, Mr. Stewart's time, not mine. But if you, Mr. York, find the right timing to chat with me, that is, with Mr. Stewart, may that be, informative and fruitful, you will see. So says Mr. Stewart.
Oh my gosh, stop saying that.
You know something? But there's some reason why you can't tell me yet. Is that what you're trying to say?
Cut the poetic rubbish, Harry, and tell us what you know. We can force you to talk, you know.
Like, what, like, talking to me? Talking to me?
Hey, close attention to the signs. The omens and the premonitions. Small they may be, they still are finds. And helpful to your investigations. So says Mr. Stewart.
Thanks for the warning, Harry. But don't worry. Me and Zack, we know what we're doing.
Mm-hmm. Why am I losing health? Like, I really wanna understand that. Why am I losing health? Why did I die? What just happened? I literally had no reason that I died. I just like randomly dropped dead. Oh my gosh, what was that? He literally just like lost all his health out of random. Okay, so... We already saw that. We already saw that. We already saw that. And now it doesn't do it. Okay. Ahhh... Okay, I was just, I'm sorry for the freaking... Brain lock here. I was trying to make sure that, uh... It wasn't dropping low or something like that. Profile, option, title. Oh wait, he's like... Okay, so, first off... I wanna bandage up. Because I don't even know how that happened. But regardless, yeah, we already see that.
So...
That was so weird. I don't even know what happened there. Like, literally bugged up. We got black coffee though! Sweet. Sweet, sweet, sweet. Oh, excuse me, Shaw. How you doing? Um... Everyone? Just looks so random. Okay. Again, why am I literally losing health? Could someone please tell me? Why?
Agent York, are you finished asking questions yet?
Yes.
When you're done, let me know. We'll all get dinner.
Okay, please, I wanna... Why am I losing health? Oh my gosh!
Agent York, your words really made me think about Anna's death again.
Hmm.
How could one do such a terrible thing?
I don't know.
I'm still in shock.
Hmm. Thomas, I forgot to ask. You don't have a tattoo on your back, do you?
A tattoo? I do, actually. But why?
Could you show it to me, please?
What? Now? Here?
Yes, please. This is vital for our investigation.
Hmm.
Okay, if it's gonna help you any.
What? It's a little weird. It's like, take off your shirt. Need to see the things.
Well, I'm wondering who G is now, but aside from that... Did it tell you anything? It told me that you didn't kill Anna.
Of course not! What are you saying?
You ought to see that tattoo, Zack. A big heart with an arrow through it and "Love G" in the center.
Okay.
I don't know when he got that done, but... We've all been through the eighties.
Mm-hmm. Oh my gosh, I'm gonna freaking... Go nuts with it going down for no reason.
Agent Morgan, here's your chance to get to know some of the townsfolk. Don't let it go to waste.
Ah, jeez. Alright, I think I did the thing. No. Oh my god, it's going fast, fast, uh... Hi, 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 hi. How you doing? You're doing great, huh? Good, good. I'm dying for no reason. Let's get out of here. Oh my gosh.
Agent York, you make any progress?
Of course, plenty. Tell me, Usher, when is Anna's funeral?
That's still undecided. Sally isn't really in any condition to do it right now.
Her mother? I don't see her here.
Anna was the sole reason for living after her husband was deceased. Well, she's probably huddled up at home.
And I should probably take some time to pay her a visit.
Well, yes you should. And I'd appreciate it if you could, too. Um, but don't go too hard on her, okay?
Jeez. Oh my god, doctor! I'm losing health fast! And there's no way for me to fix it, please!
Are you getting closer to catching the murderer?
What was that hand gesture?
Good to see you here.
Well, Doctor Johnson told me to be here. He said it would be important.
Well, that was good advice. He may be young, but he seems like a wise man.
Oh, and he's a very hardworking person, too.
I bet.
Everyone thinks he's some kind of weirdo, but I don't think so at all. People don't understand why he's in the autopsy room all day. But I do. He's doing research to make the world a better place in the future. You know, he already made a fortune in LA with his career.
I did not know that.
You didn't? Oh, the doctor is a very rich man. He has a really big house over by the lake.
Amazing, Zack. He must be loaded. Rich and young. A perfect combination.
But you don't get that feeling from him at all, do you? He doesn't show it. That's one of the things I like best about him.
Well, I could've been fooled if it weren't for you. Thanks for the valuable information, Fiona. What?
It's like, oh no, she noticed me! Oh, there's a metal over there. Good to know.
You're Isaac and Isaiah's mother?
Yes, I'm Lily.
Keith's wife?
I'm FBI Special Agent...
Agent York, right?
You are good.
The handsome special agent from the big city. The facial scar trademark, the way you introduce yourself, everyone's talking about you.
Well, I can't say much about the scar. But the way I introduce myself, Zack and I consider it a kind of ritual of sorts.
Everyone has their own rituals. It's like always leaving the house left foot first. It's one of those things.
You certainly are a funny one.
So have you noticed anything strange or out of place recently?
Well, Becky's been taking a couple of days off from work, but aside from that, I heard she was in shock after the murder. But...
You think there's something else?
Well, I took the boys along to see her today. She's always so kind to them, and they love seeing her too, but she took in the boys and told me to wait outside. Something about a special secret between just the three of them. I just couldn't understand it.
Now that's interesting. Thank you, Lily.
Good to know.
Perhaps we should give Becky a visit tomorrow, Zack?
Da-da, 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 yeah!
Hey there, FBI. I'm Keith Ingram.
Oh my gosh, those sideburns.
FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan. Please, call me York. That's what everyone always calls me.
Okay, York, no problem, man.
So, Keith. I hear you run the milk barn convenience store.
That's right, man! Rock and roll!
Do you sell raincoats there by any chance?
Yeah, but nobody ever buys them, though. Anyone who wears one of them, I say, just ain't a rocker. But you know, that scar of yours, now that scar rocks!
This scar rocks? Now that's a new one. I'll drop by your store soon, and let's talk then.
Yeah, cool, man! Rock on, FBI!
Okay. Oh no, I'm still dying fast. Yeah-huh.
Mr. Morgan, you're quite an impressive public speaker.
Really? Thank you, Polly.
You reminded me a little of a play I saw when I was younger.
What kind of play?
Just talks her real loud, and like she can hear just fine. She doesn't notice that he's just reading real dick.
When I was young, I used to come here often with my husband, God rest his soul. We'd come on the weekend to see the latest play. He'd always pretend to be uninterested, but I could tell he was excited inside. He was just one of those kinda guys, really, thinking about it now.
Really, Polly? So what's your favorite play?
Oh, well, I like so many. There was one in particular, but I can't recall the name anymore. Oh, it was a very famous one, too.
Something by Shakespeare?
Oh, um...
It's kinda funny how they put the...
No, nothing. One more bell that doesn't ring anymore. I've always been forgetful about the plays we used to see anyway.
Sounds like she's just smashing her teeth.
Oh, and my husband would get angry at me for forgetting what we saw. He'd go on for hours retelling what the play was about. His eyes were so sparkling, like a happy young boy.
I see. So, what's your favorite play?
Oh, I almost forgot, Mr. Morgan. We're going to have another guest soon. I have to get back and get things ready. Sorry for having to hurry away. I'll see you back at the hotel.
Oh my gosh. She can move, really.
Zack, I think she could embarrass the toughest of the FBI's interrogators. She successfully avoided answering my question, Zack. Amazing.
Oh, ugh, ugh. Hurry, I gotta speak to you. What in the world's wrong with this guy?
Oh my, my pot is getting cold.
Oh, okay, my bad, it's the lady. Um, well, this is awkward.
Mister, my pot is getting cold!
You are... Who?
What are you saying? I'm Sigourney. Sigourney!
Sigourney, okay. Now, what is the matter? Can you explain?
No time for chatting. I need to hurry. My pot is getting colder.
Okay.
Oh, you're useless!
Zack, we've met all sorts today, but really, she takes the cake. Amazing.
I know, right? Let's talk to Jim.
Jim, thanks for your help in the forest. How are Isaac and Isaiah?
They're fine.
They really seem to love their grandpa.
Yeah.
Well, I guess they do, son. I wanna keep them away from the filth of the material world as much as I can. Their mother agrees, which is why she lets me take care of them so often. And that's why I want you to solve this case quickly and go home.
Mm-hmm.
Those rumors about that scar of yours do more damage than good around here.
I guess I reek of the material world, don't I? I have to, in order to do my job. But I understand what you mean.
I'd think the same if I was born in a place like this, Zack.
Yep. My gosh. Why am I losing health?
Hey, good looking. Nice speech.
Okay. And who's this? Gina the Rose, Jack's wife.
And you are?
Oh, I'm Gina. I'm married to Jack. He runs the gas station. Call me the Rose.
You look pretty revealing.
Oh, this old thing. You should see some of my other clothes. You, ooh, now you are cool.
I'm right.
That scar really is a turn-on. You should come to my station. I'll give you a little extra service.
That would be great. I can't believe how expensive gasoline is nowadays. Some extra service would be great. Now, about my current case. Do you have any information on Anna? Have you seen anything suspicious?
Oh, I don't know. Talk to my hubby about the difficult stuff, okay?
This is getting us nowhere, Zack.
And this one.
I ain't got nothing to tell the cops.
Oh, come on. Jack the Raging Bull gasoline stand owner?
What about the FBI?
Shut up!
At least give me your name.
I'm Jack. They call me Raging Bull.
That's a manly nickname.
If you want info, it'll cost ya. I only talk to Ben Franklin.
You know, first impressions are important. I can detain you for a few days, and maybe you'll become more fun to meet.
Zack, this is a waste of time. Let's go.
You know what? I'm losing health here. Let me try and see if this'll fix the problem. I'm trying to think of what to do here. Um... Uh, oh... You know... Maybe that's the issue? Maybe I'm starving to death? I don't know. Let's see. If, uh... Okay. Is it because I was starving to death? Oh my gosh, it was because I was starving to death. Oh my gosh, I'm such a scrub. Okay. Well, at least I learned that issue, so that's good. Well, at least now I got time to talk to this guy and see what's going on with him.
I'm FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan.
Hello, Shaw.
Please, call me York.
Wesley, owner of the gun store called Panda Bear. People around here call me the Gunsmith.
Cool. He looks like a...
Was there something you wanna ask me?
Hmm...
How do you make a living running a gun store in a place like this?
Some guy you'd probably see from...
I'd be worried because there can't be that many customers.
Worry gets a small thing a big shadow. I do gunsmith work in my shop, too. If you got the skills, the customers find you. All you need is a network.
I hope so.
I hope so.
Here's what I've got. So you've got... Uh, SMG. Bullets, flare, and lollipop. I'm good, man. I'm good.
You've got quite a selection here. No wonder people come from all around.
Even today, a customer paid me to go to Seattle for some help. I just got back.
I see.
Alright, so...
Well, I'll be sure to visit your store sometime. I'd like for you to take a look at my gun.
Understood. Look forward to it. The shop will be open again tomorrow. It's usually open from 2000 to 0600. See you then.
That's a weird way to put it. Uh, I gotta get some health. Regardless. There you go. At least I have that. Uh, we're almost done talking to everyone. I wanna get all the infos I can.
I'm US Special Agent Francis York Morgan. And you are?
Olivia, Nick's wife.
Olivia Cormack, Nick's wife.
Anna worked at your husband's diner, right? What kind of girl was she?
Well, she was a very hard worker. A nice girl.
Did you ever see her acting strange?
Well, not really. But there was one thing. Well, you see, the diner closes when it rains. Many shops do that around here, as you might have heard. Anyway, Anna always seemed unfocused the day after it rained and came in late, too. It was almost as if she used up all her energy the day before. Come to think of it, that was really strange. Did that legendary monster really kill her?
It wasn't a monster. Just a criminal. Criminal I'm going to catch and bring to justice.
Look at you all smooth.
And who's this?
I'm US Special Agent Francis York Morgan. I presume you are the owner of the diner that Anna worked at?
That's right. Zack, I don't got time for this.
I'd like to ask you a few questions about Anna Graham. Did you notice anything strange about her prior to the incident?
Look, please, come on.
Nick? Are you hiding something?
No, nothing. All day, every day.
You're sure? I'm sorry, but I don't like repeating myself.
Okay. Just all stranger. Oh, man. And who is this? I didn't notice you earlier.
So you're the FBI agent, are ya?
The general, owner of the scrapyard.
I'm FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan.
I'm the general. I fought for my country in the Vietnam War.
A real-life war hero. So why are you living here?
Soldier, this is my hometown. After a man returns from war, there's no place to go other than his hometown. Your little speech, you mentioned the Raincoat Killer.
Was that a problem?
You imbecile. The Raincoat Killer's no myth, not mere folklore, not a fairy tale. It's based on actual events that happened in this town.
It is. I'm interested. Can you tell me more about this?
You kids today don't even know how to ask for something, right?
Sure.
Soldier, if you wanna hear more, you come to my office.
They just have a limp?
He literally exudes raw power, Zack. Despite the credibility issues, we should give him a visit. One thing, though. Calls himself a general, but isn't that a sergeant's uniform?
Something to think about. Something to think about. I think we spoke to everybody, so... Um, she did say for us to talk to her. So, no, can't do it. Can't do it. I just can't do it. Oh, wait. What is this? You can't keep this anymore. I don't- you should clean your inventory. Carol. Oh, that's right.
Anna was an airhead.
What do you mean? Are you saying she was killed because she was an airhead? Or are you saying that she was an airhead for being killed?
I'm sure she's still an airhead, even in heaven. She changed her hair every day. If she lost a pound, she'd be ecstatic. Gain one, and she'd almost be in tears. She broke many, many plates every day at the diner, and she'd always have a smile on her face, always having fun. Everyone looked at her and knew she was a cute, adorable, loving airhead. But they would be smiling right along with her. I wouldn't be surprised if the angels smiled with her, too.
Hmm. Oh. It's a little bit of a creepy smile. Okay.
Isaac and Isaiah said that Anna was a fairy of the forest. A goddess.
Oh, she just walks away like, "You're creepy, man." So creepy. I don't know why I was talking to this weirdo. Jeez. What are my friends gonna think of me now? Yeah, I should. Actually, I should, uh, I can put that in my box, though. Um, F, yeah. Yay, secrets. I don't know why I need them, but whatever. Alright. Is there anyone else I missed? Yes. Man, there is. So many people I missed. Why do I miss all these people?
I'm FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan.
So Anna was killed, but why does that bring the FBI here?
Point done, Darts Bar employee.
I have an interest in murder cases involving young women.
Well, you know, man, this might just be another case to you, but it means the death of a friend to me. And I want you taking this lightly like it's just another case.
I never take anything of this nature lightly, I assure you. I'm here to apprehend the perpetrator who did this.
Yeah, because local enforcement can't shine their own boots, right?
Good point. You can't always count on the police now, can you? But that doesn't mean you're going to capture the perpetrator yourself.
Mm-hmm.
Quint.
How do you know my name?
I memorized the name of every citizen before arriving in town. I also know about you and your significant other.
You mean Becky?
Don't underestimate the FBI. We know and see everything.
I'm sorry if I was a little harsh. I wanna help, I do. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, Zack, I'll tell you how I knew his name. He's got a small Q on his hat. That was the only name beginning with Q that I could think of. He was even kind enough to tell us his girlfriend's name. I can read him like a book, Zack.
What a dick. That was pretty freaking smooth. Sparky.
You're York, right? I'm Richard Dunn, the owner of the Darts Bar, Swery65.
Richard Dunn, Darts Bar owner.
How'd you like the town?
Oh, it's great. Aside from the murder that happened here.
Yep. Murder just doesn't fit with a small town like ours.
Well, Richard, I'll have to correct you on that. Crimes don't care about size. Big town, small town, just isn't a factor.
I guess you're right.
So, how did you know Anna?
I've known her since she was a child. She was the same age as my son. She always stood out, being pretty and all, just like her mother.
What do you know about Sally?
Well, I went off to school with her right here in town. I never thought our children would be the same age.
I don't see her here today.
Ah, well, see, she lost her husband and this time it's her daughter. She's at home right now, trying to make peace with it all.
You seem to know a lot. How long have you been in love with her?
Hey, hey, don't go there. That scar of yours tells me you got your hands full, too, right? Let's not dive into personal matters. It'll be better for you and me.
You're right, Richard. Collecting gossip won't help with the matter at hand.
Alright, so... We're almost done? I think?
Good evening, agent.
Almost three hundred of them coming. Oh my gosh, that is one creepy guy. Oh, well, he is a gravekeeper, you know.
Good evening, Mr.?
Brian.
Guess that makes sense.
The gravekeeper. Brian.
Mr. Brian? I like the retro look. Auditioning for Little Grave on the Prairie?
Anna. Oh, she was so beautiful. Too soon.
Kinda looks like Stubbs the Zombie.
Too soon to go to the grave. So sad, so sad.
Definitely got the clothes for it.
I totally agree. That's why I'm here, looking for the one who did it. Were you close to her?
Hmm... Anna, her smile, so warm. Anna, blonde hair, so bright.
There's a graveyard somewhere in town, Zack. I'm not excited about the idea, but maybe we should at least check it out.
Got you all the things. Well, I guess that means that was the final person.
Agent Morgan, I'd like to let everyone go home now. Let's go outside.
Yeah, you're always leaving. Back in the hole. That's that guy. He's just a one-man party. I got him. He's just, yeah, 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 the best, the best meeting we've ever had. Oh my gosh. Gotta do this every time. Anyway, guys, I think that's, uh, gonna be the end of that for now. Um... Hopefully, I mean, at least you enjoyed that a little bit, trying to... I don't know. I know I didn't talk too much while they were saying stuff. I'm trying to at least understand what is probably going on and hear what everyone has to say in the thing. Um, so that way, maybe I can also understand what's going on with the story here, but it is still kind of an interesting game, even though it does seem a little weird and all that. Um... But yeah, I mean, I did. Regardless, I still enjoy it. I think I was an idiot for not noticing that I was starving to death. But at least now I know that. So anyway, um... Yeah. I, if you liked the video, you know, hit that thumbs up and let me know down in the comments below. If you haven't already, you know, I appreciate if you hit that subscribe button. It'll help me out a lot and I'll see you all next time. Later.